We'll go ahead and get started. Today's date is December the 6th, 2021, and this is the TELCITY Common Council Meeting. First item after the call to order is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and every power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. First item is adoption of the agenda. Counsel, I do not have any additions to the agenda, so if there are none, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion made by Julie. Do you hear her second?
All second.
Second by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands adopted. Next item is a presentation of minutes for approval. Counsel, this is from your November 1st. There are two corrections. In the third paragraph, second if you don't count the Pledge of Allegiance part there. Lord of Works will be changed there. And on page two, under this old business sports complex, the word financing in that paragraph there will be corrected. There's two F's in it and it should just be one. I don't believe there's any other changes or corrections. If there are not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve with those corrections.
We'll make the motion.
We have a motion made by Gary. Do you hear her second? Second by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item on our agenda is comments as citizens. At this time, are there any citizens that would like to make any comments? Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the minutes. Hearing none, we'll move on. Committees and ward reports. We'll start with Ward 1, Larry Kleeman.
I have no report.
Okay, no report from Larry. Ward 2, Julie Coner.
This is report, we did have chili cook-off. It went over very well. It very turned out, good weather. And we also had Christmas in the park, which was last Saturday, and the parade followed it at four.
It was a great turnout. Thank you for everything that we did. Yeah. It's probably the best weather we've ever had for the parade, I'd say, in many years. All right. Ward 3, Philip Simpson.
I don't have much, just all the Christmas decorations look great.
They do. I've noticed more Christmas decorations up this year than in years past. So you're right, they look great. All right. Move on, Ward 4, Gary Morton.
While I was involved with the parade Saturday as well, my main job was giving away cookies.
You did a good job at that.
They were made by the culinary arts high school kids, so it went well. 500 cookies.
I made you eat.
I declined to answer. Okay, let's see. Solid waste. We're in the process right now of looking for a new director there. Ken is retired as of December 31st. So we will be hopefully finding someone within the next few weeks to take that position. They're also looking at fee adjustments. There have been some little links about, from some people about the fee adjustments being, well, not perhaps fair. I'm not sure what fair means in that case, but again, they're looking at that possible change in some of the fees charged to some individuals that aren't here. Bodies are made steady up and down, and it seems to be working well, and I think our staff out there is staying on something. That's about it for solid waste.
Anything else?
So.
All right. And John Little couldn't be here tonight for counsel at large. Do you have any statements from the clerk treasurer or the city attorney?
Nothing for me.
Okay. All right. We'll head, move on now to old business. Adoption of the TELCITY Electric Department's 2022 budget. Counsel, you do have several board members and staff from the TELCITY Electric Department present here tonight. So if you have any questions, now's the time to ask while I pull up your ordinance. You should have a copy in your package too, if you can't see that. There's no way I can see that. You should. People look. There it is. Like you should. And this is for career notes, this is ordinance, this will be ordinance number 1181. If you want to write that to top, fill in your blank, because it's not filled in on yours. Any questions on the TELCITY Electric Department ordinance before I ask for a motion to read for first reading?
Now, I don't have a question on this ordinance. I was just wondering how you guys think inflation from all this COVID supply shortage is going to affect electric, like your electric supply? Like the cost of electricity to you guys? Is it going to be?
Well, I said it last time, and I see you see the packet. I think it's four and a half percent increase wage. And this cost from this current year coming up. As far as inflation, we're seeing the price, not just on purchase power, but across the board going up. That and lead times, like transport rates, it's lead times right now. We've got some vendors that aren't even putting server a year out. And it's just from COVID back, the manufacturing not being able to produce the equipment fast enough. So we are seeing, you know, price increase across board, just materials to purchase power.
Okay. That's all I got. Because I was reading something online, and I saw it. It said electricity had a big inflation the past month or two, and I was worried.
I think the biggest one in the energy side is gas. That's what they're looking at, the gas. There is an inflection in the electric side, but not nearly as much as gas.
Okay.
Yeah, some parts.
Typically, that affects electric when it's a gas-powered power plants, but doesn't affect electricity itself priced directly now.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Andy or anybody on the TELCEDUCCARD? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to allow me to read. I can read this one. This is a short one. Sure, I'll take the easy one.
Motion for the first reading.
We have a motion made by Philip. Do you hear her second? Second by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Counsel, this is the first reading of ordinance number 1181 of the TELCITY, excuse me, of the Common Council of the City of TELCITY, TELCITY, Indiana. To accept and adopt the budget of the TELCEDUCCARD for the fiscal period 2022. Whereas all municipal utilities are required by Indiana, excuse me, by the State of Indiana, according to Indiana Code 8-15-34, Section 4A6, to submit a budget to the municipal legislative body. Whereas the Board of Directors of the TELCEDUCCARD, by Resolution Number R211019A, has adopted a budget. Whereas the resolution of the Board of Directors of the TELCEDUCCARD was presented to Honorable Mayor and the Common Council for first reading on December 6th, 2021. Whereas the Board of Directors of the TELCEDUCCARD respectfully request that the budget be accepted and adopted as presented. Now therefore be resolved that the budget as presented by the TELCEDUCCARD is hereby accepted and adopted. Be it further resolved that a copy of the budget is placed on file in the office of the Clerk Treasurer of the City of TELCITY and the Office of the TELCEDUCCARD. By resolution of the Common Council of the City of TELCITY in regular session, December 6th, 2021. Approved by His Honored Mayor at the time and date recorded below. Testa Cuny Berger, signed Chris Kell Mayor. Counsel, this is the first reading of ordinance 1181. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion for the second and third reading by Todd Olin.
Make the motion.
Make the motion made by Gary. Do you hear her second?
I'll second that.
Second by Philip. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading, ordinance 1181 of the Common Council of the City of TELCITY, Indiana. To accept and adopt the budget of the TELCEDUCCARD for the fiscal period 2022. Third reading, ordinance number 1181 of the Common Council of the City of TELCITY, TELCITY, Indiana. To accept and adopt the budget of the TELCEDUCCARD for the fiscal period of 2022. Counsel, you've had the first, second, and third reading of ordinance 1181. Is there any other questions? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Make the motion.
We have a motion made by Gary. Do you hear her second? Second by Philip. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 1181 stands approved. Thank you. Thank you all, Justice, and you feel like the department for showing up. Y'all have a safe night. Next item under old business, I'm keeping this on here just for discussion. Because we are going to take action on this in January, I hope, for several boards and committees. I have not been able to get this list to the newspaper or out on social media like I had hoped to. Some things have just came up that we just weren't able to get it together. But we'll get that posted this week so we can start taking any letters of interest from anybody in the committees that would wish to serve on any of these boards or committees. So they are highlighted in there in your package. You all should have copies of them. So if you have questions, let me know. Give me a call. Vernik, you can call in the office, she can help you with it too. If you know anybody that might be inclined to serve on any of these committees or boards, reach out to them. Tell them to turn a letter in. If they could direct them all to the mayor's office, and as they come in, I'll group them and put them all out so you get them. You can turn to the clerks, but the mayors would be better just so you have one central location where they all end up. If one would go to the clerk, Connie, make sure I get it. But if you could tell them to do that. On here, if somebody has a question on a committee like the beautification committee, you know, talk to Gary or Julie can kind of tell you the responsibilities and duties on it. You know, there's several other ones in here, like we're going to have an opening, I know, on the cemetery committee. So if somebody has any questions on it, can reach out to Gary or myself and kind of explain to them the duties and responsibilities. These all have the meeting times on them too, if somebody wants to know. That's something we added to this list last year to help CVB. They can reach out to any of the board members or myself. I'd be glad to help them. So it's just some things that, as people want to serve on these, we want to reach out to them and inform them of their duties. Yes, sir.
On the lottery course?
Hang on. Is that several pages of the TELCITY Electric Board? Yeah.
Don Anstle was appointed in October.
Yes.
Why does her four-year term end in December?
I don't know. I'll have to look into that. There. I'll check that. Maybe somebody's seen it get changed. I'll look into that.
I think it would be.
Yeah.
Can't four.
My understanding is that the person she replaced, that term expires September 30th.
Yeah.
So I had to. I think it would be October to September 30th.
It would be. It's probably just a typo.
I think that would be 9/30 of 25 if it, if that plays out.
Yeah.
If the math is correct.
It's missing a year too, so I'll look into that. Thank you for pointing that out. Julie, you had a question?
Like beautification.
They're all mayoral. They're one-year terms, but if somebody else would like to serve on there, we can add more people to that. It's a committee, it's not bound by.
I'm saying you're going to reapply or.
Yeah, I'll re. Correct. Well, it's highlighted on mine. It's green. Mayorals are greens. Yeah. Yeah. Yellow is just vacant. It's, yeah, and councils are in a red on here, so.
So I didn't know if you'd done it.
So it's. She still might. No. I'll reach out to some. The mayoral ones, I'm going to reach out to several and see if they still want to serve on them. But we can always add people to some committees like that. That's, I'm sure the beautification committee would welcome more volunteers to that group with open arms if they could get them. Because with Betty retiring next year, I don't know if she'll stay on that position. And the beautification group is the one who actually puts on Christmas in the park, the chili cook-off, and several other events that are very important to the community. So we definitely want to get people on that committee to continue those things, and we will. So if you know anybody, let us know. All right. All right. We'll go ahead and move on now. Under new business, is there, I'm sorry, there was no questions left on that, right? On the committees and wards. All right. Under new business, DCDC contract for 2022, Erin Anderson. We have Erin here. She's got a short video. Do you want me to show, do you want me to show the video first? Or when you give me show that?
Let's, I can talk about the ready program briefly, but.
Okay. I'll let Erin go ahead and talk about the ready program just a little bit. And then. Yep, it's on here. And then you should have a copy of the contract in your folder as well as emailed out to you. So if you have any questions, let us know. So Erin, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Can you understand me up here? I feel a little muffled, but I tested negative today, but I've been a little under the weather, so I'm going to keep my mask on. Yeah, you guys should all have a copy of the contract, and no language has changed. It's the same as previous years in that it includes assisting and advising the city of TELCITY in economic development activities. Of course, our focus kind of evolves as the needs of the community evolve, but they offer under the areas within the contract. And one of the things that we just finished working on was the State of Indiana released a new program called READY. And it, it's a long acronym, but the whole purpose of the program was to accelerate the state's economic growth by making Indiana a magnet for talent. So it was really about population growth and talent retention and attraction and development. So regions, it was a $500 million program from the state. Regions are eligible for up to $50 million, and a region had to be at least one county, or at least two counties. So a single county could not apply. And it took us a little while, but we found our region, they are self-identified. Our region is called Indiana First, and we had five primary counties, Perry, Bean One, Pike, Spencer, Knox, and Harrison were the five primary. And then DuBois, Orange, Davies, Martin. But there were 10 in all. The others were part of another primary region. But we submitted our plan, and last Monday, we presented to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. And hopefully, those announcements should be made in the next couple of weeks in terms of what funding decisions are made by the state. But there was a lot of work put into that, and there are a lot of TELCITY projects included within the plan. It is kind of a match or reimbursement-based program. So the more development and funding that you have going on, the more you are eligible to get. And it represents a lot of potential, a lot of projects. We, in all the regions, submitted, I think it was 67 million in projects, but we'll be capped at 50 million. And I can answer any other questions about the READY program. Or like the mayor said, there is just a short one-minute video that was part of our region's presentation to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. And the mayor is in that video, and there's just some, it kind of shows the different areas that were submitted.
I think it's important, it's 20, right now, it's a 20% reimbursement, right? Or rebate, or anyone call it. I jokingly called that, but.
Yes, it's based on, they'll match up to 20%, and then they would like 60% private and then 20% local.
Yeah. So I mean, we've got a lot of projects coming up in the next couple of years, next year even. Everything from, you know, the sports complex, senior center. There's several downtown revitalization projects in there. There's, I can't tell you the list because I don't have.
There's housing included. Haggadore Park was in there. A ton of downtown revitalization projects that kind of all wrapped into a single TELCITY downtown submission.
And we tried to include as much as we could, because if you didn't include it, you can't.
Right.
Rather, it can be a, I don't call it a pipe dream project, but even a project that's not even really off the ground could be put down.
There's never been this type of funding program available before, so it was kind of our opportunity to get really creative. And we did come up with some projects that are kind of, not necessarily pipe dreams, but thinking, dreaming really, really big. Just to see, you know, what happens. And one of those is a pick Perry strategic talent attraction, which is looking at population attraction, not necessarily like your entry-level worker, but those needs that are really specific within the community, like we know we need veterinarians or mental health professionals. And that those things are kind of holding our community back. So it included up to $25,000 recruitment packages for those very specific individuals. And they were kind of, it's kind of built like a customizable menu. So it's cash, relocation assistance, maybe free internet per year, regional amenities and experiences and things like that.
So we can pay for part of the sports complex with this?
If our region is awarded, yes. Because there's already some funding for the complex, you can get a match on that. I believe it included up to $1 million.
Same thing with the senior center.
Yeah, I think the cities that had calculated it up, if it's all.
I gave her a pretty long list.
I think there was like 6.3 or more in TELCITY.
We included our water projects in it too.
Yeah.
Our water projects are already doing, so if this approves, we can actually get money back on the bond.
Right.
The $5 million.
Anything that you have funding for already, as long as the project has not already started.
Like the water meters wouldn't qualify because we already started it, it's going on now. So, but like the water tower, the new water, 16-inch water main, those would be included in it. So if, if we do get awarded, we would actually could receive those funds back for more projects.
But the 50 million is, it's all going to one, like every week?
It would be split between our region. So, yeah. So between the five primary counties. Yeah. And it kind of, I think Perry County had the largest match, so we would, you know, if we truly do end up having the largest match, then the largest amount will come back to Perry County. But it will, of course, be based on actual expenses once they're, if we get awarded.
And I think, do we include PSC in that too?
Yes.
Because they're doing a lot of broadband out in the county.
We tried to think of any projects that were potentially in the works, anything that could be coming up that could be counted as. Yeah, there's a ton of IV tech projects in there. There's a Perry childcare project in there.
That'd be big.
There's all, it's, it's a very, there were over 60 projects that were submitted just for Perry County.
Even the hotel in there. I mean, because it's a private, private council, it doesn't have to be a city project, so.
Yeah. Our, our Perry County committee had over 60 products that were submitted. Now those had to get vetted down because Edward County had a lot that went in, so we ended up.
They had more still.
Yeah.
We shot.
Well, we took, there were several smaller TELCITY projects, and Alvin ended up wrapping all of those into a single, like downtown revitalization project. But it's really exciting. There's a lot of potential, and the state has enough money to award, I believe, 10 regions $50 million. There were 17 submissions, so, I mean, what, we, the state could, you know, still just do the 10? Or they could give all 17 regions a lesser amount?
I would imagine that's what they would do. I couldn't imagine them carving out, you know, and doing that. That would be.
But we'll see. It was, I felt really good after we presented last week in Indianapolis. I felt really strong about our presentation and the videos that we showed, the takeaway that we left with them. We'll see.
Yeah. Do you guys want to see the video real quick? It's just, it's got Perry County, it's got other counties. So when you see other people that, well, they're not from Perry County, don't freak out. It's our regional video.
I'd like to see the video. I've got a couple of options on this contract.
Do you want, do you want to go video first or contract next? Let's do video first, and we'll go into the contract. Is that okay? All right. And Gary, you probably just see this.
For downtown revitalization.
Hello, I'm Steve Visco. I'm the CEO of Polycos Better Company, and we are ready to start operations in Knox County.
Hi, I'm Justin Johnson. I'm the chief operating officer for Remont Energy. We're ready to invest and build over 1 gigawatt of solar in southwest Indiana.
I'm Mrs. Gellhausen, and I'm privileged to teach the future leaders of Southern Indiana.
We are ready.
I am Paige Schenck, a working mom in Perry County. I am ready for reliable childcare.
I'm Joe Lenny with the Southeast Indiana Small Business Development Center, and I am ready for small business growth in Harrison County.
Hi, I'm Roy Belieber from Spitzer County. I'm taking classes at IV Tech TELCITY, and I'm ready to start studying robots and smart manufacturing.
Hi, my name's Aaron P. I'm a filmmaker in Knox County, and I'm ready to continue to tell my people's stories.
Hi, I'm Vivi, and I'm seven years old, and I'm ready for a new playground, because this teeter totter is older than my dad.
Oh, I'm Santa in Santa Claus, Indiana, and we are ready to welcome people from all over the world.
Hi, I'm Chris Kell, mayor of TELCITY, and we are.
You could just kind of see the regional approach there.
And counsel, if you'd like to see the video later, I can email out the link to you all, and you can watch it at home. If you'd like to watch it, to see it, if you couldn't see it or hear it very well. Any questions on the READY part of, that Erin was talking about? Then we'll kind of get into the contract and.
Today I heard December 14th.
Couple of weeks, right?
Well, all the, everyone presented last Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So they're wrapped up on Friday, so maybe they're going to give themselves a couple of weeks, and we'll see.
What was it? It was Perry, Pike, Spencer, Knox, Harrison.
Okay. Yeah, Harrison. You know, a lot of recognition should go to Erin and the committee for what they've done. You know, this is a huge opportunity for the county to receive some funds back, and I want to thank you. I know it takes a lot of work on top of other things. So this has been something totally new, and, you know, here you're focused on things, and this comes in here, and this is an opportunity. Thank you for taking time to get this together.
Thank you. It was fast, I'm furious, and we had to.
It was fast. I mean, like, here's this money, you have a week or two weeks, get yourself together.
Well, I think we started at a, because we did not already have a defined region. There were, you know, regions that were predefined, had paid staff already, and they were ready to cover their plan and hit their own run. And so we had to do some maneuvering and figuring out before we could get started, but I feel good about our submission, and we'll.
When will those awards be granted, or when will it be decided?
I think relatively soon, like the first part of 2022, if the funding is announced.
In January, February?
Uh huh. Because projects will, it's a tight timeline too. It's like a three-year timeline to get all these done. So it'll have to start moving really quickly.
So if our region's awarded something, then who decides within the region who gets money?
There is a committee set up. There are three representatives from each county, but it will also be based on match percentage. So you're not necessarily going to get, you know, a certain portion of the money if you don't have a certain match built in. And we tried to pick out projects that had really strong funding already established.
Like the apartments.
Right. Right. Things that are already happening that we know are going to happen that we can count.
Sure.
So.
All right. Larry, you had some questions about the contract. You go ahead.
129, 116, and 80 cents.
Yes. Page 3. Page 3. I was just telling them to take it off, honey.
Last year was 129, 110. So it actually went up just slightly, which was, we were kind of, no one knew what the edit numbers were going to do because of COVID and the impact on incomes and people not working. So honestly, that was much, much better than expected, which is a really good sign for everyone, that incomes didn't significantly go down.
And these ones come out of our edit funds, correct?
Yes.
What can edit funds be used for in addition to contracts like this?
Economic development and stimulus.
We do a three-year edit plan where we, where the mayor determines what it's going to be used for over three years.
So like the sidewalk project on Highway 66, edits covering our portion of that, you know, from the state that we're doing. Their edit is covered our, no, it didn't cover our, yes, it did, our fire truck.
Well, that was edit reserved.
Edit reserved. A little different, but yeah.
We take some money each month from, each year from edit, but then the edit reserve.
Yeah. So it did, I don't have my edit plan in front of it.
It's doing the Washington Street and the.
Main Street.
Main Street.
It does wastewater, it can, we've got some funds. It can, it's, we've got some funds set aside for like the pumping station. It's, I could, if you want to see a copy of the edit plan, I could show it to you. I'd be more than happy to. And then it kind of spells out what it's currently being used for. But it can be used for, you know, like when that, on 9th Street about 10 years ago, where that sewer collapsed, edit funds paid, I believe, to fix that. So it can be used to buy a lease car.
And the, on the exhibit A, the. Are there three full-time staff before PCDC?
There, I'd say there's two and a half. There's myself, Amanda, and then Alvin, but he's also working with the port as well. We have a plan to add an additional person. We've taken a pause on that. We wanted to look at the edit numbers, see what was going to happen as an impact of COVID. Our goal is to add an additional full-time person.
Yeah.
Uh, there's two and a half. Two and a half.
Yeah. How does our amount, my understanding, you can also get contracts from the county?
Yes.
Does Troy participate?
Yeah.
Does it count with this rate?
They did not last year.
How does Tell City's amount compare to the county's amount and Troy's now?
It's 20% of the total edit. And Connie, I know you know this a lot better than me, but it's the, the total edit, and it takes the 20%. These hourly rates are the same. That's the, nothing in the contract changes except the, the city of Tell City or the county or the amount. So the hourly rates are still the same, and the percentage is 20%.
Yeah. Everybody's paying an equal share of 20%. Troy pays 20%, Tell City pays 20%.
Right, there's the interlocal agreement that works to keep everybody.
And Cannleton does not participate. Last year, they could choose to next year, if they want, as something Aaron's.
It's based on 20% of whatever edit funds are raised by a particular governmental entity.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. And how is that determined?
That is determined all from the state and Department of Revenue.
No, how was the 20%?
That's a question for PCDC.
Yeah, and it has been, it's part of the interlocal agreement, which has been 20%, I believe, since we started doing the contracts in 1990. I'm not sure how the 20% was selected then, but it's been the 20%.
That's a question of Alvin Evans.
Yeah, I know Alvin has.
Do the companies share deals? I know it's 20% of the law, but all figures.
I don't have it on me. I did the math for all of them.
Last time I saw it, it was like 250,000.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
It's more.
Yeah, it is definitely more. The hourly. Oh, yeah.
It is, yeah, it's more.
Let me see if I. It is. It's, it's definitely over 200,000, but I don't have the exact amount.
Council, is there any other questions regarding the PCDC contract? If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion for the council to approve. Allow, allow myself as mayor to execute, sign the contract. We have a motion made by Philip. Do you hear second?
I'll second that.
Second by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, guys.
Next item under new business, item B is a 2022 holiday executive order. Council, this is something that, that is an executive order, so the council does not vote on, but I'm going to just read it real quick. Let me get it up on the projector for everyone. You should have a copy of it in your folder as well. This is Executive Order 2021-6. I, Chris Kell, mayor of the city of Tell City, pursuant to section 4, uh, 4.5 of the personnel policies handbook adopted by resolution 2018-9 of the Tell City Board of Public Works and Safety on November 5th, 2018. Adopted, the annual holiday schedule for the year 2022 for the city of Tell City, Indiana, and its offices employs as follows. I hereby declare that the holidays to be observed for the city of Tell City are as follows. New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, Good Friday, half-day PM. Primary Election Day on election years. Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, General Election Day on election years. Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, Friday after Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Eve, half-day PM, Christmas Day, and New Year's Eve, half-day PM. It's important to note that including holidays and non-election years are to use at employees' discretion, which we actually just had this year. Exceptions of holiday schedule may invoke working full day on New Year's Eve and receiving a full day off work on Christmas Eve. Adopted by executive order pursuant to Indiana Code 36-4-5-6 by the mayor of Tell City this 6th day of December 2021. Chris Kell, mayor, tested by Connie Eberger, clerk treasurer. There is no motion or action. This is something that I signed, and Connie tests my signature on that. So I just wanted to let you all be aware of the holiday schedule for next year. Any questions on that? We move on. Item B, appropriate, additional appropriation for request. So Connie, you should have a copy of this in your folder, but I'm going to let Connie drive this one. And she's got, she's a lady with the money.
We are asking for two additional appropriations within the county general fund. The first one is within the cemetery budget for additional labor of $3,910. We did have one of the employees off home at MLLA this year, so we did have to hire our part-time person to work more at that time. Plus, it seemed like the grass season lasted longer this year, and they worked longer, and we just over budgeted on that. And he does not have anywhere within his budget that I can transfer it at the end of the year. And the next one is within the pool budget, and this is in the repairs of the building and building equipment and pool. And what this is, is additional concrete work that needed to be done at the pool house, where the vending machines will be located. They put an overhead door there, and this is, this is concrete work that is done to keep the water out. My correct.
Correct. And then a section next to it was cracked up enough where we wanted it to be nice and smooth.
Yeah, so where we're needing an additional $6,000 in orders to do a pay-for-back additional concrete work. So it brings it to $9,910, this is the request. And at the current time, we do have plenty of appropriated expenses in the general fund to cover this.
We're trying to remember, but I seem to recall we have additional preparation for the pool earlier in the year, also.
We did, it was around $8,000, and that was for, that was another concrete work that he, he has not done yet. So I'm going to do that, I'm going to cover that over to next year because he's not going to get that done for this year. This was, this was another set of additional work that was not within the contract.
And do these expenditures count for our match on the pool variant?
Oh, yeah. We've already got our match well, so yeah. Yeah, we're really good. We've got our end time, we've got, we're good.
Well, sorry, I know it's not very good to really do this, but what's the status of the pool project? What's the estimated completion?
It'll be done for, it'll be ready for Memorial Day. It opened as planned, with the new splash pad and all the bells and whistles. We'll have a big, nice ribbon cutting, so make sure you're there. And Philip's going to jump off the diving board for us, officially get it going. But he was a swimmer back in the days, so he's a swimmer of us all.
That's all, extra boards, he's going to do that.
He's going to do it.
Rodney Dangerfield does.
He's going to do a twirl off air. Yeah, he's going to do a belly flop. But it'll be ready. We actually are having a, a status, pool status meeting on Thursday. And we're actually discussing a kind of that covered portion I was talking about. We have an opportunity to have a donation that would cover the materials. We just have the construction of it, we got to figure out. So we're excited about it. Any questions on the additional appropriation? Do you want me to read it, Connie? Do you want me, I'll read it if not.
I'll volunteer if you guys.
Jeffrey, you can read. You've got to earn your money, didn't I?
I'm just a speed reader. So if you have a, has a motion been made for the?
No. Well, it's a resolution.
No, no, no motion necessary for resolution, so I will read this sucker. Additional appropriation resolution 2021-5. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate additional funds beyond those that were appropriated in the annual budget. Now, therefore, section 1, be it ordained by the city of Tell City, Perry County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the same. City general fund, cemetery budget, number 101-008-113.000. Cemetery additional labor, $3,910. Pool budget, number 101 dash, or, I'm sorry, number 101-007-361.000. Repairs, building equipment, pool, $6,000. Total city, city general fund, $9,910. Adopted this 6th day of December 2021.
All right. Council, you've heard a reading, a reading of resolution 2021-5. Is there any questions? Okay. If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt. We have a motion made by Julie. Do you hear second? Seconded by Philip. Any further discussion before voting? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Make sure you sign the right call, too. Or, yes, actually, it is the right call, I'm on the right. Yeah, on the right. All right. Last item under new business is the PCDC delegate. Council, I sent this out on Friday. I'm going to sign this real quick while I see. To you all. I'll just go ahead and read the letter. It's not in your packets. I didn't think it needed to be, probably. So, Dear Tell City Common Council President, this is for Gary Morse. Sorry, I read your mail. The Perry County Association will hold its annual membership meeting January 11th, 2022. Invitations for these events have been emailed with details regarding the meeting. You'll need to certify a delegate to cast your vote to your organization on any issues come before the membership at this meeting or any other membership meetings called during the 2022. Please complete the enclosed certification form and return to PCDC offices by January 3rd of 2022. I certify any misunderstandings if you have a representative of the board of directors. You certify a membership delegate does not need to be at the same individual. So basically, you could, if, currently Gary's our representative. You could put Philip on there, right?
Yeah. Remind myself every year. So you get to pick a delegate that votes at our annual membership meeting, but that is not, it does not necessarily have to be the same person that is your actual representative on our board. So you can still pick Gary if you want, or you could pick anyone else.
I'd say the same person.
It's typically been that person.
Yeah. But it doesn't have to.
It doesn't have to be.
It makes the most sense, yes.
Yeah, it does. So that's what you're needing. I have to point someone, which I'll, I'll point myself, as, as in the past has always been done. So I just have, it's, it's in the packet for you all to see, but it doesn't necessarily matter for you guys. You don't vote on mine. So is there any nominations to make? Our delegate will be for the meeting?
I'll nominate Gary.
Gary, you're going to accept?
Sure.
Okay. We've got one nomination. Any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, I'll entertain a motion to approve Gary to be our delegate for PCDC for the meeting. So I need a motion.
Oh, a motion for Gary.
No, no, I'll entertain a motion. I'm entertaining a motion. Did I say entertain? I hope I did.
I was about to grab him and stop him from doing that.
No, I wasn't. So you get, who firsted?
I did.
Oh, Philip. Motion made by Philip, seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Gary, stop in this week. I think you've got to sign one of those forms, and then I'll get these sent in to Aaron at PCDC, so they have them on their, by their meeting. I know they, they want it by January 3rd, but I wanted to get, get it done.
Sure.
Under mayor's report, I don't have a whole lot, except for we do have one thing we got to talk about is our meeting schedules. Connie, did you have a date in mind? I can't remember, I didn't write it down if you did.
December 20. We need to have one more meeting of the council to finish up all our, your, uh, AP vouchers. And I will not have the ordinance on the transfers and all that. Maybe last year you gave me the authority and two council members to get that finished. And so what I was looking at, we could do it on December 20th, when you leave your board or meeting anyway.
No, we can move that time up.
We'd like to maybe move that time to like 5:30.
Well, the board of works could be at 5:30.
5:30. This could be at.
Water board could be at 6:30, and this could be at 7:00 and be done. And ours will go pretty quick. You're talking 15 minutes max. Depends on, you know. Is that work? What's it, what's at 5:30 that night? Well, we're just bumping it up. Oh, okay. The board of works and the water board. Everything would be kind of bumped up.
After you've got this firmed up, send me an email, because we do have to change our meeting notices.
Yeah.
6:30 on the 20th for one more.
Yeah. Unless you guys want to bump it up to 5, we can bump it up to 5. The board of works and water board will be at 6:00 and so forth. What do you guys want to do? It's around the holiday season. We've always moved it up. Whatever. You guys decide.
It's going to be dark either way.
Yeah, it's going to be dark either way. I mean, I know your schedule, not, nothing against Larry and Gary and John, but you know, you guys, what time do you typically, can you leave the office? That helps too. Let's just leave it 5:30 then. That's why it's not going to cause any problems. It gives you time to. So for the board of works, we'll be at 5:30. Then your water board will be at 6:30, which will last about a half an hour. Then we'll roll right into our counts we need for at 7:00. Because we actually have to say the time, you can't just say the follow. It has to actually be. Water board typically, we might be able to even bump it up a little bit, but not really.
It has to say knowing what the water board will be like. You could do 5:30, 6:00, 6:30, and knock them all out with 30 minutes. Probably time to spare with each of those.
Depends on, I don't know what's going to be in the board of works yet at that time. I hate to rush that because I don't know what, who knows? Correct, yeah. What did you say?
You can be late, but.
You can begin your meeting late, just not early.
Right.
So if you did 5:30, 6:00, 6:30, if, if the, if the 6 o'clock board of works rolls over, then you're okay.
So what time are you suggesting? Say it again to me, so I can write this down.
If you were, well, it depends on the order you're doing them.
5:30.
5:30, 6:00, and 6:30. As long as nothing starts early, we can start.
Okay, there you go. So water board is now at 6:00. Okay.
That's on December the 20th.
Okay. That works.
One time thing.
Thank you. Well, we always move them up around the, especially if that week, you know, being the holiday week. You know, I mean, it's, there's a lot going on, and we try to be respectful.
That's easier than you can do myself.
You can't even read my handwriting, I didn't spell it. Okay. Last thing I do want to bring up is tomorrow, the bids are due on our bonds at 10:30. Right, is it 10:30 or 10? 10. They're due at 10 for the 1.7 million, and this is the sports complex and the senior and all the bonds that we've been talking about for the last, for like six months.[1751.36]